Okay, I now call to order this August 1st Friendswood City Council meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation be led by Pastor Mike Ross from the Friendswood Church of Christ. After Mike preaches to us a little bit, we'll remain standing and do the pledges.
Thank you, let's pray for a moment. Holy God, we come tonight with gratitude for the rich blessings in our community. We're thankful for leadership and service of our council, our staff, and volunteers. And we pray, Lord, blessings on each of them with wisdom, with guidance, and discernment. May each of us gathered here in this room this evening walk in your mercy and embrace your grace and make a difference in Friendswood. All of these things we bring before you in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. First though, item four, council comments and reports. Any volunteers?
What was it? I'm sorry.
Council comments and reports.
I have nothing.
I can go. I can move on. I can go.
Go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, I went to the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District this last weekend, I mean, this last Tuesday, and they're just blowing and going over there. They're doing a lot of great things, but this is one of the unique things that I think that they have done, that I think is a very novel idea. They took these 90-foot flatbed railroad cars and repurposed them as bridges, and this is, both of these bridges are going over Mary's Creek. The one on the right is, if you're going out 518 towards Pearland from here, just at Auto Tech, if you turn right on the gravel road there, you can go over there and see what they're doing. And they've cleared out on the other side of that creek, all the way down about 180 yards, 50 feet in. These railroad cars are capable of holding 80,000 pounds or a little less than 40 tons. And the one on the right, they repurposed two of them, welded them together, and you actually drive a vehicle over it. And the one on the left is at Imperial Estates, and this one, they took, on both of them actually, they have a half-inch 12-by-12-inch steel rebar I-beams that are drilled 20 feet down into the ground. And then they have another 12-by-12 I-beam that's going across, that's welded to the flatbed railcars. It's really cool. This one specifically on the left is just for walking traffic and bike riding, and that will be connecting both sides of the creek to the Imperial Estates of Harold Whitaker detention area and park area. So they really are doing a great job over there. I do want to mention, and I was a little bit perplexed with the board, they did have on the agenda just an item, just to discuss the possibility of having a homestead exemption for the May 8th, 2023 agenda. And they voted it down, just to have a discussion to possibly talk about a homestead. I wish they would have gone ahead and moved that they could have put that on there and possibly gotten a homestead exemption for the residents here in Friendswood. But other than that, I just love what Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District is doing. They're doing a great job, and I just think this was a really novel idea. They saved a lot of money, and the capabilities of traveling across it and that sort of thing with the stability of those railcars, I thought was a really neat idea, and I wanted to show you all that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocky?
I just want to mention that on Saturday, August 20th, at 2:00 in the afternoon, the library is having a local author panel. There's actually five local citizens who have written books, and they will all be featured. And one of them's called "The Astronaut's Wife," by the way, by Stacy Morgan. But again, that's August 20th at 2:00, if you're interested.
Great. Sally?
So I'd like to mention that the Friendshood Historical Society has just finished training 10 new docents. We have five who have partially completed our training, and we have three more that are waiting. So we're very excited. We hope to be reopening our Friendswood museums, that's the Brown Museum and the Perry Home, the first weekend in September. So we've not been reopened since COVID, and we're looking, very much looking forward to being able to do that. So EDC did not meet this month, however, we do have a couple of items on the agenda that you all see we have been working. And then last but not least, it is official, we now have a full slate of officers for HGAC. I'm serving as your chair. Trey Duhon, Judge from Waller County, is the vice chair, chair-elect, excuse me, and the vice chair is trustee Rissy Owens from Huntsville IST. So we are now back and operational. That's it.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Trish?
Okay, I attended the hearing, the public hearing that the library had, the public community. It was very good, Matt. Thank you for organizing that, and thank your staff. It was well-attended, lots of good discussion, and y'all are doing a great job, I think. I attended some other committees, everybody's doing a great job. Pleasure to be here and an honor to serve.
All right, well, thank you all. Moving on, public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall refrain from any outbursts or interjections, including but not limited to applause, disparaging noises, and remarks. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the city manager, city attorney, or municipal judge, shall not be discussed and shall be referred to city Mike Ross. You're back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for the words earlier, Pastor. We appreciate your prayer.
Well, it's just a privilege to have these invitations periodically to come and participate in the invocation. It's a real privilege, and I feel really blessed to have that opportunity. And just a brief word, I just, sometimes I come up here and I whine, and I don't want to watch that. I just want to express gratitude. Manager Mo and his leadership team, you and this team, I'm really grateful for your service, your efforts, your leadership, thankful for the encouragement that you offer people to step in, volunteer in our community, get things done. Anyway, I just come with heartfelt thanks for who you are and what you do. God bless.
Thank you, Mike. I need to say it's a thankless job. David Allen.
David Allen, 214 Inwood, Friendswood, Texas. This is something everyone's familiar with here, a cellphone. And we also, it runs on microwaves, and we also have microwaves that we can stare at while they're cooking food. Why are our eyes not being boiled out of our skulls while we do that? Because if you notice in the front of the microwave window, there's a screen. It's calculated to stop the wavelength of waves that are cooking your food. This is a Faraday cage. It's a metal-lined pouch, and if the cellphone is put in the pouch, you should turn it off before that, otherwise it's trying to find an antenna, runs, the battery's down real quick. Then this is no longer trackable. While you're wearing it without a Faraday cage, every few seconds, it reports back to the main computer where you are, and you can be followed months and months of your travels. Years can be called up and paid for. It's saleable information. You each now have a DVD of 2,000 mules, where in the last election, where everybody was wearing masks and people got $400 million from Facebook to put anonymous drop boxes for ballots in six key states and others. But the mules made a mistake. They weren't carrying their cellphones in these Faraday cages. The drop boxes were supposed to have security cameras, and a lot of them did, a lot of them. They never put them up. But when the mules, who repeatedly, county to county, every night for two or four weeks before the election, dropped off their 10 or 15 ballots, and you could see them, they were told to photograph them before they did, this was a military-style operation, very well done over the internet, and very well paid for by non-governmental organizations, NGOs. The people that were interested in finding the truth out about this, unlike most media, paid for the tracking information. When those security cameras were on those drop boxes, and those mules were putting in, stuffing in their ballots and photographing them there with their cellphone, that tells you exactly who that is with that cellphone. This is actionable data you'll see in the 2,000 mules. So 2,000 means the top 2,000, if they had actually not done their thing, all those six states would have completely flipped. No problem. But it was, again, a military operation. Apparently, those drop boxes were put in different precincts, and you noticed the election results were stopped about 11:00. That's basically the final tally. So they knew what percentage they'd have to grab over the next day or so out of each of these ballot boxes, so as not to have more than 100% people voting in each of the precincts. Very nicely done, and you'll notice each of the six states won by just between 10,000 and 20,000 votes. Very carefully done. But anyway, true Texas vote, go online, true Texas vote, or your county party, and volunteer to be poll watchers. We need them to save the country. Thank you.
Don Johnson.
Well, hello, I'm Don Johnson. I am your Harris-Galveston Subsidence District representative, and I thought today would be a good day to come by and just give you a very brief update. You might have somewhere up around a little spreadsheet that you can look at, and this is something I invented several years ago and gave it out to the cities. The cities seemed to like to look at one page, something like this, where it's pretty easy to understand. It shows how much water, groundwater, the major water providers in Galveston County are requesting, what their groundwater fees are, and how much they are actually using of that, and if they're getting a rebate back. So it kind of gives you a very, very high-level 50,000-foot picture of what's going on with groundwater in Galveston County. Of course, every once in a while, one of the cities will ask for more detailed information. I just want to let you all know, if you ever want a presentation, I'll be glad to come back and give you a more detailed presentation. League City recently asked for one, and a presentation was put together for them. And we have a kind of a histogram where you can go back and look since 1900, there has been tracking of subsidence in Galveston County and Harris County through that period of time. And it's kind of interesting, a lot of people don't realize that there's been four to six feet of subsidence across League City and Friendswood over that period of time. We don't have that problem now because everybody is such a good conservator of groundwater, and so we keep the ground pretty level. But we do have all sorts of information in case you're ever interested in it. I'll be glad to come back and provide you such, if you ask for such. Anyway, I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, but thank you all very much. My phone number's on this little thing, too. If you ever just want to give me a call and ask me something individually, I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Thank you much. Thanks for your service, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Jason Cantrell.
How are you? Good, how are you? So I'm kind of a new resident in Friendswood. I'm an ex-history teacher in public school for eight years, and in college for a couple of decades. And my wife urged me to come up here tonight. She was looking on the texas.gov website, and she was looking ahead at our appraisals for our property. And we're definitely middle, you know, lower to middle-class people. We live over 411 Belmar, over in Anna Alea. And when we got our house, that year, it was appraised right at $80,000. And for us to move in there and to want to stay there, you know, we looked ahead, we're smart, you know, I do have an education, and we looked at the numbers before we moved in and said, you know, asked ourselves, could we handle this? We looked at that website, there was kind of named Steve around here I talked to, he was looking at it, too. He's one of you guys. Anyway, our appraisal is, well, it was 80,000, and this, I mean, go four, five, six years into the future, and it's over 200,000 with all the insurance, property taxes, and everything that goes with it. You know, it makes it very difficult on some citizens. And as a former Texas history teacher, I just, I thought maybe, and I thought I was living in a red city, so I thought maybe you'd appreciate a couple of things that, you know, that all of our government here, and not just the United States, but specifically in Texas, is based on the idea of limited government, and that what we expect as citizens are the basics. You know, we expect a guy with a gun to show up if there's trouble, somebody to show up to stop the house from burning down, the floods not taking our property away, these kinds of things, you know? And, you know, being a conservative, that's all I'm looking for. I'm not looking for amenities, I'm not looking for luxuries, I'm not looking for tourism and to be a destination. I'm not looking for any of that stuff. I'm looking for a good place to stay and to live with my wife and my daughter, you know? And I just wanted to kind of say that, that, you know, oh, I got 14 seconds left. I guess in the end, I'm just looking for, instead, you know, when you're deliberating about your property tax rate, that you think about cuts, 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 you know, those kinds of things for your budget, rather than expansion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Item six, committees or special reports. Receive the Community and Economic Development Committee's annual report. The report was attached to the agenda item in the packet. Any questions for staff on this item? Okay, item seven, work sessions topics. Receive and discuss an update regarding the city of Friendswood's capital improvement projects from Mr. Hill Arias, Engineering Director. Evening, Hill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to give you your latest update on CIP. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me, and we'll jump right into an update, a quick update on fire station number two. The construction, of course, is ongoing. Last week, last Tuesday, the slab was poured for that building. If everything goes well here within the next week to two, you're going to start to see that go vertical. The pre-engineering metal building is in the process of being delivered, and we'll start to see that taking shape. July 2023 is what we're looking at, at this time for completion of that project. So next is the Public Safety Building. Exterior framing is ongoing right now. And also, something that's just kicked off is the renovation around the courtroom. There are also a men's and women's restroom being built outside in front of the courtroom. There's not one there yet, or presently. And that one is moving a little bit quicker than the fire station project. That's slated to finish in March 2023. The other building project that we have is the Black Hawk Facility renovation and shelter. The construction plans have been delivered to the city. They are currently being reviewed. Once the city staff has finished reviewing that, we're going to have that out for bid. So have that pretty soon. The target date that we have on this for completion is May or June of 2023. So we're going to have a busy couple of months. The next update is on the 2022 Street Maintenance Program. The concrete portion of this year's program has been completed. Asphalt streets have been started. Right now, they are working on Murphy Lane. The order that they'll be going in is Murphy Lane, some combination of Garden Drive and Sedora Drive, and then finally Carriage Creek. As I mentioned, Murphy Lane is under construction right now. They had hoped to have moved on to Sedora or Garden, the contractor, by now. Unfortunately, like so many other things going on right now, they have hit some hurdles with material availability. For some reason, the cement that they've been using in the stabilization of the roads, it's being rationed by their supplier, so they've been having to scramble to find some alternate suppliers. But with any luck, that should be, Murphy Lane should be paved within the next week to two. And then as soon as they're done with that, they'll be moving on to the next set of streets. So here, within the next two to three weeks, we'll be well over halfway done on this. So, and hopefully, that'll be complete here within the next month. Aiming to, they were aiming to have that done before school started. Don't know if that's going to happen at this stage. Next is the update on Black Hawk Boulevard, Phase 2B. As you all know, this is a partnership between Harris County and Precinct Number Two and the city. It's a $2.4 million project, and currently, the inter-local agreement between the city and Harris County is under review at Harris County with their legal department. Soon as we get that, we'll be presenting that to you for approval. And right now, I'm anticipating within the next, we're hoping to have this ready for next month, if not the fall month, but we should have a engineering contract for you guys to ready here pretty soon also. Okay, next is the FM 518 Elimination Project. It's going to be touched on a little bit more later on tonight. There's an agenda item to authorize the funds to be expended on this project. I did want to mention that city staff has been working on this diligently here the past couple of weeks. There is a long-ish lead time on the polls on the material, looking at five to six months before we can get started on that. So we're doing what we can to help expedite that on our end. So we've been working with the contractor to look at all our submittals, reviewing, making sure that all the materials and supplies that they're purchasing are what we're looking for. One other thing that I wanted to mention is, as soon as we get past that stage, we will be working with the contractor to look at alternative options, and this will be touched on a little bit more tonight beside the Friends Church. The contract that is being presented to you tonight does not include lighting beside the Friends Church. You've got big, beautiful trees there, and we're looking at, we'll be looking at alternative options to get some lighting there through some uplights to at least provide some lighting in that area. Finally, I wanted to mention the, as you all see, the curb ramp project downtown, Tech Stop is ongoing, and they're getting real close to finishing it up. Again, they're also dealing with some supply chain issues with their cabinets before they can energize the traffic signals. Should be a more, a few, couple more months, and then they'll have that done. Currently, what we're working with the, with Tech Stop's contractor, hand-in-hand with the city, is we'll be doing some testing, pulling lines to make sure that everything is in order for the FD EDC project, so that we don't hit any snags, hopefully, when they're pulling the wire for that project. So. One other thing I was going to mention, and it's not on this slide, but it is Tech Stop related. We have had some discussion in the past about improvements to be done at the intersection of 528 and 518. I did want to let you guys know that city staff has made a request to Tech Stop to look at that. We've presented Tech Stop with results of the citywide traffic study that was done a couple of years ago. It's been repackaged to look at just that intersection, plus two other intersections, the intersection at Whining Way and at Sunset. We have sent that over to Tech Stop. It includes some recommendations on what can be done. The easiest implementable thing that they can do is optimize the timings, but the recommendations also call for the construction of additional trending lanes, both in left and right turning lanes. Altogether, it's about a $12.8 million package, and I have sent that over to Tech Stop. They're going to run that up their chain, and we're going to see what comes of that. So. Yes?
Is the $12.8 million package just the intersection at 528 and 518?
No, that, just the intersection there is just a little short of 7 million. 12.8 is the combination of three intersections.
That blows my mind. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And Mo gave me an answer, but I think the crowd would like to hear it. A number of the, on 2351 and a couple other of the state highways, the signs for the cross streets are completely faded. And could you guys, could you tell us, or Mo can do it, on the progress on that?
So the city reached out to Tech Stop a couple of months ago to ask them to go down all the Tech Stop ride voice and replace all those faded signs. They do have those delivered, and they will be starting to replace those here pretty soon. We'll touch base back with them and find out a good start date for you, but that is in the works.
Sally?
Murad, you may already know this, or have heard this question. With school getting ready to start again, the question's been asked by multiple community members about a traffic signal on 518 as you're entering Centennial Park. Can you address, I'm sure we've asked the question before, but I would just love to hear the answer again as to why we don't have a traffic signal there?
Sure. Back in 2010, and Trish is very familiar with this, she was superintendent at the time, we had conducted, and she asked for it, yes. We conducted a joint traffic impact analysis with the school district, the city did, before the junior high was built. The results of the study came back and said a signal could be warranted, but one was also warranted at West Boulevard, and one already existed at Eagle Lakes Drive and 518. And due to the proximity of those signals, that Tech Stop felt that it wouldn't be a good idea to have three consecutive signals that closely spaced. What they ultimately hung their hat on was that we would have an officer there for both AM and PM school starting and school letting out times, so a signal could be mitigated. The unfortunate reality is, after school lets out, the extracurricular activities that take place are still problematic, because there's not an officer there directing traffic. So we have asked Tech Stop to reevaluate the signal warrant analysis to see if one is warranted at this time. Yes, it would violate their spacing requirements for traffic signals being that closely spaced, but we may have reached a threshold due to the volume of traffic that goes through that corridor that one would be warranted, and they would put it in their queue to fund. Obviously, as you heard from Hill, all of these requests come with a fairly large price tag, and so Tech Stop Obviously, as you heard from Hill, all of these requests come with a fairly large price tag, and so Tech Stop has to work it into their budget.
Uh, so you'll keep us updated on that?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's a, it's been ten plus years, if it was two thousand and ten, we're already in twenty-two now, so I just think it'd be good to revisit that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And uh, we've reached out to them and uh, uh, have offered to provide them with any information that they need to uh, uh, help study that uh, intersection, see if it's warranted, so.
Thank you, Hill.
Yes.
What are the hours that this is happening from, where the?
So last month, y'all approved a school zone officer agreement, so on the Tech Stop roadways, the city provides police officers in the AM uh, at the start of school, so for the junior high, I believe it's around eight thirty or thereabouts, and then the afternoon, it's right around three or four in the afternoon. Uh, obviously, the, it varies based on the campus and when school starts and school ends. Uh, we can do anything, but it will come at a cost, and we're already having a shortage of personnel on the public safety side.
Correct, correct, yeah, that's what I was thinking, it may be a conversation to avoid that light between the two taxing entities to figure out how to keep that light. I, I could see where those lights are too close together, and it looks like leaked city, right there.
In- inevitably, and we had discussed this with Tech Stop back in two thousand nine, uh, we're gonna need some drastic access management improvements down five twenty-eight and five eighteen, and what I mean by that is medians will have to be placed in the roadways to prohibit cross movement at different locations to minimize conflict points. And by doing that, you can allow for more safe movements in and out of different areas. In two thousand nine, Tech Stop had approached the city about doing that very thing. Unfortunately, the city wasn't prepared nor wanting medians at that time, so we asked them to please move along.
Thanks, Hill. A lot of good work, appreciate your efforts.
Appreciate it.
Item eight, municipal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Ms. Katina Hampton and Mr. Murad Kabiri. Item A, receive and discuss a presentation regarding the City of Friendswood proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Good evening, Katina.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you mentioned, we're here to discuss the proposed budget for twenty twenty-three. And just keep in mind that changes are still possible in the proposed budget. Prior to its adoption, we delivered the, the proposed budget according to our county, or according to our city charter uh, by August first, and we ask that you ask questions as we move along tonight. Um, this is information that we've shared with you um, in a couple of times in the last month or so about the key drivers that were used in the development of the proposed budget. We want to, we won't go through all of them, but just want you to keep this in mind as we move through the presentation. Um, and what we have included in the proposed budget based on what we as staff believe are the needs, uh, what's needed to um, either keep with current services levels that are expected of our residents, or to enhance those service levels where possible. Um, our total budget, um, our total proposed revenue budget, and this is all funds, not just the general fund and the water and sewer operating funds. This is total funds, about one hundred and seventeen million dollars is what's included in the proposed budget. Um, this is a decrease from uh, the prior year or our current year's budget of about um, seven point four million. Um, just as you'll look at the slide and take, take a look there, you'll see that the largest portion of um, of this revenue is planned or budgeted uses of fund balance and retained earnings in several funds, and that's what we'll be using to complete um, construction projects that are related to general obligation bonds, as well as revenue bonds, and some of um, our grant funded projects, so that's the largest um, portion of our, of our revenue that's shown in the proposed budget. Uh, we have another thirty-one million or so um, that is in uh, taxes, and that's not just property taxes, but it's also um, related to um, sales tax as well as franchise taxes. The remaining um, about sixteen percent is charges for services in both the general fund and water sewers included here in those um, those proposed, it would be our utility fees um, for water and sewer services, as well as some parks and recreation fees. The remaining thirteen percent is just various um, other revenue sources such as intergovernmental uh, revenue, as well as interest earnings and um, things like that. Our total expenditure budget, again, all funds, this is um, at fourteen point two million in the proposed budget. Um, as you'll see here, as previously mentioned, the largest portion of our expenditures are related to capital improvements that we are planning to complete or budgeting to complete in the coming fiscal year. Um, the remaining um, expenditures are, as you can see in the chart, based on um, those expenditure categories. We'll shift gears and just um, narrow our focus a little bit to our general fund, this is our main operating fund for the city. Our proposed revenues in the general fund are at uh, thirty-four point eight million is what we have included for the proposed budget. This is up about one point seven million from the current year's budget. Um, about eighty-three percent of that is related to taxes, this is property taxes, sales taxes, and franchise taxes, keeping in mind that our half-cent sales tax related to street improvements and economic development are actually recorded in separate funds, so those are not in our general fund. Uh, the remaining seventeen percent, as I mentioned, are made up of other um, revenue sources such as intergovernmental revenue, which is grant funds. Um, some also in that would be our um, FISD um, contract for school resource officers in school zones. Um, also some building permit fees and our fines and uh, fees through our municipal court, as well as parks and recreation fees. Our other um, category there is related to sell, things like sale tower rental, um, our donations that are made to various programs in the city. This is a different look at our general fund revenue, showing the increases and decreases um, of those specific revenue categories from our current year's budget. Um, also want to make mention here, um, and we'll mention it probably a couple of more times in the presentation, that the five hundred thousand dollars for streets is included in the proposed budget as a um, as a budgeted use of um, our fund balance above the ninety-day uh, reserve. Keeping in mind that we have still about seven hundred thousand dollars that is um, that we're waiting for reimbursement from different grant agencies uh, for hazard mitigation programs, so in a nutshell, what we're doing is spending into our ninety-day reserve um, to include this in our proposed budget. Our proposed budget is um, was developed um, using our current tax rate of forty-eight point seven three cents. Um, want to mention that after this presentation was complete, we did receive our certified um, tax rates from Galveston County Tax Office, who does our calculations and checks, double checks our, our work on, on our um, preliminary estimates of our um, tax rates. So the budget was developed using the current tax rate of forty-eight seventy, uh, forty-eight point seven three cents. Our no new revenue rate was certified at forty-five point seven four cents. And um, the current tax rate is about three cents above our uh, no new revenue rate. Uh, but it is well below uh, the voter approved rate, which we'd have to go out for uh, voter approval to adopt. That rate is about fifty-eight point seven cents. So we're, at our current tax rate, we're still well below that voter approved rate. Um, we are, are, once certified, um, we have about four point six billion dollars is our net taxable value. In that include, is included about fifty-four million dollars in new construction. And it also takes into consideration all of the exemptions that the city offers, as well as the over sixty-five is the exemptions. Our exemptions outside of the over sixty-five exemptions total almost two million dollars now, and the over sixty-five freeze ceilings are, have now surpassed nine hundred thousand, or nine hundred million, I'm sorry. Um, in the, um, in our tax rate estimates, we add certification, we still had over two hundred thousand, or two hundred million, I'm sorry, in um, properties that were still under protest, and we anticipate about eighty percent of that being added to the tax rolls based on those appraisal review board um, decisions. The tax rate of forty-eight point seven three cents would allow us, or would bring a levy of about four point five million dollars to cover our debt service obligations. We wanted to mention that this four point five million dollars in debt service obligations, it is um, less than what was projected when we did our last bond election. Um, even though it's less than that, we've still seen about a one point three million dollar increase in our overall debt service obligations uh, related to, to our previous bond issuances since twenty nineteen. This slide, we, on the next slide, we wanted to uh, follow up on some questions that have been asked of council, asked by us of council. Ms. Branson had asked about the half-cent sales tax, um, or half-cent um, sales tax reduction on our tax rate. The city does um, allow um, and ha- and opted in several, quite a few years ago, to have a portion of our sales tax offset our property tax. So that reduces our um, voter approved rate by about seven cents, so really, we could go, our, our voter approved rate is about fifty-eight cents. If we did not have that half-cent sales um, tax um, option declared, our um, voter approved rate would be seven cents higher. So we could actually go up to as high as um, sixty-four cents on our voter approved rate. Um, Ms. Branson, or Ms. Hanks had asked about our uh, breakdown between commercial and non-commercial, or, or, our commercial versus residential uh, property tax valuations, and we're at about eighty-four percent residential and about sixteen percent non-residential or commercial properties. Um, Mr. Scott had asked about a comparison of our tax bill, um, of our tax bills related to the no new revenue rate versus the um, versus our current tax rate, or what we built our budget um, based on, um, as you can see on the slide, at our tax rate right now, and this is just the city's portion of the tax bill, not the total tax bill. Right now, on a um, a property valued at four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that's the average home value in Friendswood, um, taking the twenty percent homestead exemption, that tax bill current year is sixteen hundred ninety-six dollars roughly. If we were to um, looking at the no new revenue rate and looking at the projections for the increases in property value, worst case scenario, if it was ten percent, which is the cap on residential uh, properties, that value would go up to about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, um, taking the twenty percent um, homestead exemption, that tax bill would be roughly about um, seventeen hundred and fifty-one dollars, so about fifty-five dollar increase there at the no new revenue rate, if we were to hold flat. Um, and nothing changed, if, if the value of that property didn't change, the tax bill would stay the same um, at the rate that's included in the proposed budget.
So this is a correction from last, the last city, this is a correction from the last city council meeting.
It is. So, as we discussed at the last city council meeting, um, it was, it was commented that the, the proposed rate would be an increase of about forty dollars.
Correct.
Right, also at the last meeting, we showed a slide where the city had increased uh, over what, a five-year period, the total of about two hundred and eighty-five dollars per resident. So we're proposing in one year, over five years, we increased it a hundred and eighty-five, or two hundred and eighty-five, and in one year, we're gonna increase it a hundred and fifty?
So, the, the slide that showed the five years was based upon the average home value, or was that based upon the two hundred?
It was based on the, the four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but it did have a conservative estimate of about three percent increase, and this is showing a ten percent increase in the property value.
Okay, so, right, so, yeah, so I think the, the nine percent increase on home appraised values is pretty accurate.
So the, the two, on the, the five-year window, the two of those years were the no new revenue rate, and so that's one of the reasons why the property value didn't, did not increase.
I'm not debating that. What, I'm not debating that at all.
Correct.
I'm saying that in five years, we increase the tax, the city and the
The city of Friendswood.
Government.
Correct.
Increase the tax burden on the average homeowner in the City of Friendswood by two hundred and eighty-five dollars over a five-year period.
Correct.
By holding the flat rate this year, we're going to increase it a hundred and fifty dollars in one year.
Correct.
Oh, that's, that's exactly what, what it is.
Correct, and so, as I was stating earlier, the comment that was made at the last council meeting, the forty dollars was based upon a three percent growth on the multi-year financial plan.
Sure, got it.
And on preliminary values, it was incorrect.
Got it. So um, let me ask a real quick question while I'm here, so I know last year, we increased the tax, tax revenue to the city, to the tune, I think, at the end of the day, it was what, like seven point one or something?
It was seven.
Everything in?
It was seven percent inclusive of new construction as well.
Correct, correct, and so this year, we're proposing three and a half?
It's gonna be six point, inclusive of new construction, it's gonna be six point four five percent?
Yes.
Correct.
That seems kinda odd to me.
Uh, and understandably so, uh, and we can discuss it further in the upcoming slides, but as I mentioned last year, or the last council meeting, we've seen an increase in contract services of one point three, almost one point four million dollars.
Own a business, I understand.
And then on top of that, we have instituted construction projects that the voters say to tackle, that have gone up over the last four years, one point three million dollars.
Understand that as well.
And on top of that, we've had to tackle deferred maintenance items on our public safety building roof, the, the activity building roof on the Centennial Park wall between the Lakes of Falcon Ridge and Centennial. So there, it's been a combination of a lot of projects coming online at the same time.
I fully understand that, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, I, I'm not denying any of those factors, right?
Yes, sir.
I own a home and I own a business, so I know the effects of inflation and rising cost. Um, what I am saying, as a elected official who's supposed to keep spending in check, I think, that's about thirteen percent in two years, and we're going up a hundred and fifty dollars, and we only went up two hundred and eighty-five over the last five years.
And, and I-
That's a pretty, pretty tough pill to swallow.
And I'll, I'll obviously defer to council to have this discussion, because it's, it's y'all's um, purview as to what's decided. Uh, I will say, the tax increases that have been enacted over those time periods, and you'll see it on the upcoming slides, have always been in, done in conjunction with voter-approved bond projects, so the voter said, raise my taxes to tackle these projects.
Correct.
And we have stayed below the voter-approved thresholds that they had told us that they were willing to support.
Correct, okay.
Is there any way to tell us how much of that hundred and fifty-five dollar increase is due to bonds that were voter-approved?
Um, the increase in our, I'd have to look at our debt service rate increase.
So our, our debt service rate dropped this year from ten cents to nine point eight cents, or some of thereabouts, but that's simply because the value has gone up.
Because the appraisals went up, the amount of dollars it's taking to uh, to pay down our debt is nine cents versus ten cents, but that was because of the increase in appraisals.
Correct, and so we can do a calculation uh, here quickly.
About a penny.
Uh, it, it was a drop in value of about a penny in debt service payments, simply because it's a function of the value.
For one hundred dollars.
Correct, but we'd have to do a calculation of uh, the average rate last year plus the average rate this year, and take out, and just apply the debt service.
Right, and to look at, at if there were any, if there was any, what the debt retirement was from the previous year.
So, we can get you that value next, next meeting.
Penny is about one, four hundred and seventy-five. Yes, sir.
Um, but it, just looking at the no new net revenue, actually, our no new net revenue last year was four point, I mean, was, was forty-five point, um, it was actually a little less than.
It was forty-four cents.
Yeah, it, so I really anticipated that forty-five cents to be around forty-four cents. And so I was, I was a little bit surprised to see that, that it stayed right in there at forty-five cents. My biggest concern was that we were raising taxes above the no new re- net revenue, higher than at any time in the history of Friendswood. But just based on the fact that that forty-five cents was forty-five cents, that's not the case.
Correct.
And I had talked to you about that, I was really freaking out when we were talking at the, at the meeting. I anticipated that to be around forty-four cents, and a whole, and that was really gonna be bad, but that really surprised me in the budget. But we are raising taxes above the no new net revenue rate, about at least exactly what we did the last time we were here, six or seven cents.
A little bit, bit less than last year's, but yes, sir.
Uh, seven percent, yeah, six, six percent.
Correct, and you may recall, the reason for that is, the prior year, we did the no new revenue rate, in which case, we saw an increase of the debt service. And we forewent that tax increase in twenty twenty, and by doing that, that further compounded issues, because we had to squeeze operations and maintenance to cover the increase in the debt service. Well, all of the, the cuts that were made that previous year have since been put back into place, with the exception of two FTEs that we had cut from the budget. And so because of that, the, the debt service impacted compounded, so that was the reason for these subsequent two years, when we didn't stop issuing debt, we issued debt in last year, and we're proposing to issue debt again associated this year. The only way to stop-
The debt service is going down.
The debt service value, the rate's going down simply because the values have gone up, but the impact-
That's, that's the point we're making. And then last September, when we all sat there, and um, we ended up funding virtually everything that the city wished for. We said, except for about eight thousand dollars, and I'm not sure, well, we, we didn't ju- We said, except for about eight thousand dollars, and I'm not sure, well, we, we didn't just pass the hat in September and say, let's go ahead and fund that too. Everything on the wish list, we passed because we had monies in each one of those categories to do it.
It was not the wish list. We adopted what was the, the forces at work plus a couple of decision packages.
Unfunded forces, whatever they call it. I can't remember.
Correct. But these are costs that the city incurs based to contractual agreements, deferred maintenance items, we, uh, these are costs associated, for instance, the volunteer fire department contract that we have going up two hundred and fifty-three thousand. The, our mowing services going up three hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Oh, I agree. It's, it's a shock.
Each of these items, these aren't wish list items, these are things that we have contracts in place to provide services that, uh, the voters said that they want. So it is, there is a compounding effect from the fiscal year twenty twenty-one in which we adopted the no new revenue rate, eating the debt service out of the operations. All of the cuts that were made that fiscal year to make the budget work came back online with the exception of two FTEs that we didn't bring back online. So it further compounded that issue the subsequent years.
I don't really see that, but, um, just simply because the funds were there. And, and we, we did away with an entire department. So we, we made the necessary cuts to be able to, to, to stay within our budget and still have more funds to, to fund those items that, um, the city wanted.
That, that cut was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The overall cuts that we made that year to make the budget work was four hundred thousand, so it wasn't even half of that.
One department was three hundred and sixty-three thousand. The economic development department was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
We cut a person, we didn't cut the service. So we cut the person and their benefits, which was a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
We cut that entire department out.
It's still in the budget.
That included TMRS, that included, um, not, sorry, in addition to all the other additional-
And that was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, that, that cut.
And I, I don't recall, but I'd have to go back and look.
All right, let's move on, Katina. Getting bogged down. You know, these are the same numbers we've been cranking on for two months now.
Well, we've actually, I've just seen the summaries of these numbers. I got the actual budget, um, Friday to look at.
And I will say that the, that's a function of the fact that we don't have certified values till-
I know.
Thursday. So, uh, we're, we're, we're basing a lot of this information off preliminary values. And even the information that's being presented tonight's likely going to change between now and September and until all the values that are under protest are finalized.
Yeah, really, it's hard to say they're certified now when we have a three hundred million dollars worth of protested taxes.
Correct. And we only have certified values from Gauken County. Harris County's not obligated to give us certified values due to their population till the end of August. So we're working off of prelim- preliminary certified values at Harris County.
Yeah, they're preliminary, and, but, but we could have those sooner than Friday to discuss this on Monday. That's the only thing that, that is really difficult, um, for us to talk about when we finally get what y'all are summarizing up here in dollars to get the budget, the preliminary budget, even though they're not certified, we still are seeing where you're coming up with the dollars in the big summary. It's just like you mentioned, um, our total revenues for the entire city is, was down about eight million. Well, that is a, a, a result of a one-time COVID, um, in grant dollars we weren't, was, we weren't going to receive again anyway. So going from a hundred and twenty-five million like we had in, in twenty twenty-one, dropped to, to one seventeen simply for one-time purposes. So our actually revenue dollars total, even though it's less than the one twenty-five, that was simply because of a one-time event. Our revenues are up.
The, and the coronavirus funds were one point nine million, um, that first infusion. And then we, we received additional.
Additional funding. And then I think we received another eight million dollars for waterworks and stuff that we did, the meters and-
Which those money haven't been expended. So those, that eight million drop that you're referring to is not a result of the COVID funds. It's a result to the fact that projects undertaken the previous year that we don't, not taken this year.
Okay. One-time events.
The actual increase in property taxes revenue that's coming into the city of Friendswood is one point eight million dollars. That's the delta we're talking about. So the, the-
The twenty-two million from tax, tax revenue.
Correct. There's, between the current tax year that we're in, the NFY twenty-two, and the one we're going into, there's a delta of one point eight million. That's the sole delta. Of that one point eight million, one point four of it is contract service increases that are beyond our control. Two hundred thousand of it are debt service payment increases that the voter said to fund the debt service associated with the project. And the remainder of it is for fuel and electricity to keep our cop cars and our public works vehicles out and about in the community.
Go ahead, Katina.
This, um, the next slide actually shows the, a little bit more detail about the property tax revenue versus the rates adopted each year. Um, shows the inverse, um, the inverse relationship of the tax rate decreasing from, um, twenty-ten. We had a tax rate of about little less than fifty-nine cents at that point. Um, going to a little under forty-nine cents, um, being included in the proposed budget. Uh, we'll mention, as has been mentioned, that, uh, that a big part of the reason for that is the increase in values. We have seen values go from, uh, two point four billion back in twenty-ten to four point six billion now. The next slide.
So this is a slide I referred to earlier.
Slide, sorry. You will see nine of the last fifteen years, we've adopted the no new revenue rate or less. Two of those years, we decreased taxes beyond the no new revenue rate. The subsequent six years, inclusive of the proposed one, are the ones in which we increased taxes based upon voter-approved debt issuance. It's your slide, so.
I'm disagreeing with you.
The next slide will show our proposed expenditures in the general fund at thirty-four point eight million. Um, it says the balanced budget, it's down from thirty-three point one million in the current fiscal year. Um, as you can see in the chart, the breakdown by city departments, um, each department's portion of the expenditure budget. Um, the capital improvement is the five hundred thousand dollars for streets.
Before you move on, go back one slide. Just a little slow commenting. That's a very impressive slide, I think. It, it's a picture that shows a really good, uh, money management. I think of councils before me, before I was on council. I think that in staff, uh, the health of our community, the building, it's just a, it's a good picture of, of, I think, fiduciary responsibility and a healthy, uh, community that's growing too. So I think we shouldn't underestimate that. That's a really good-looking picture to have that a lot of cities don't have.
Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to say that before you got lost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. I knew you didn't catch it, so, thanks. You're welcome.
I, I will note on this slide before Katina moves on, uh, you'll see the two largest pieces are the largest piece of the pie for the city of Friendswood is the public safety. Between the police and fire department and fire marshal's office, you're looking at nearly fifty percent of our budget, forty-seven percent of our budget. When it comes down to core services, maintaining the streets, being able to flush your toilet and turn on your faucet and get clean water, all these are critical services for the city. And I'm not discounting any other services, but the predominant lion's share of our budget go to the core values and the core responsibility of this organization. We have, we have impacted these operations the last fifteen years by the, by how fiscally conservative we were squeezing the operations and maintenance to make sure that we're able to provide these services at the most cost-effective, uh, way possible. And what I mean by that, and you'll see on some subsequent squ- slides, we already told you last month that we already have the lowest staffing ratio of any Houston metro area city. And we're, we're proud of that. On top of that, we're going to see what some of these other cities do, are doing for their employees and what we're not recommending to do here, but just to show what the steps were taken to make sure we're as lean and mean as possible.
And Mo and Katina, I want to tell you, this is an incredible document. This, this right here is the most incredible thing I've sat down and read. And the work that y'all do to put this out is absolutely unbelievable. And I, I urge anybody, if you really are serious and you want to see where the dollars are going, is get a copy of this. It's great work, Katina.
Thank you.
It's, it's, it's easy to, fairly easy to read, and, uh, it's an incredible document.
And you would agree there's no fluff in there.
I would tell you that I was surprised when, when, if you'll go back up to that, uh, that, that, um, general fund that Trish was talking about, you see that yellow line? I fully anticipated the blue that's next to it, which is the no new net revenue, to go below twenty twenty-two, so that the amount of dollars that we were raising over the no new net revenue rate was going to be even higher, which would have meant to me that we were increasing the taxes more than at any time in the history, uh, in the history of this chart. But that's not the case because the no new net revenue rate actually went up. And so that's, that shocked me this weekend when I read that. Okay, thanks.
It's a great slide.
You're welcome.
I don't think you had anything to do with it, John.
John will be off council in about a year. We'll be able, we'll call this the Trish Hanks slide. After that, that'll be the-
I'll inherit it from you for a year.
I will be here for every budget meeting.
For that five hundred thousand dollar road, road bill.
Our, the next slide, um, shows our, the, the forces at work and decision package items identified by the departments that have been included in the proposed budget. This information can be found in the supplemental section of the budget document. It's, um, it totals about one point six million, just under one point six million.
You have about three slides worth of unfunded decision packages that we're foregoing to make this budget as lean and mean as Mo likes to say.
Our next slide, um, the information to the left of the screen, um, you have seen before. This is information that we presented, um, at our budget retreat, or at our council retreat, as well as last month's meeting. It shows the, uh, personnel cost increase, uh, related to the, um, employee merit that is included in the proposed budget. We have about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars included. About five hundred and fifty thousand of that is general fund-supported. And then another eighty thousand is water sewer fund-supported. It does include the taxes and related, uh, benefits. Um, wanted to reiterate this to show, um, how much of a need there is for employee merit and how much the staff really does appreciate it. As you can see, um, there is still a deficit between the cost of living going up for our employees. Um, so that is why, you know, we, we strongly, you know, we appreciate merit and we're thankful that it is, um, able to be included in the proposed budget. The information to the right, Murad kind of alluded to just a little bit ago, is just, it's intended for comparative purposes, um, for you to, um, look at that and see what some of our immediate neighboring cities are proposing in their budget for, um, compensation increases.
And if I may, Katina, and I've said this to you directly, I like this chart because it brings it home. So many times, we're just looking at rack and stack of numbers, but this actually makes it real. You see what this is. It's people's homes, vehicles, ability to eat. This brings it home because the largest portion of our budget has to do with our people.
It does.
So I appreciate this chart.
Thank you.
The, the other reasoning for this chart is to, to hammer home, I've already told you, we have the lowest staffing ratio. On top of that, we're the only city in the immediate area that is only doing merit. We're not doing a cost of living adjustment. Our neighbors not only are doing a cost of living adjustment, which is an increase to salaries without any merit-based system, they're also giving them step increases based upon a pre-described collective bargaining agreement, which the city is not civil service here in Friendswood. And I am happy about that. Uh, but they're also giving them merit and COLA and step increases. The only way we're able to compete and can continue to have quality employees and do more with less is that we provide a merit pool for them so that there's some, there's an incentive for them to work harder and to do more with less.
What is the factor that two point seven five is multiplied against? Is that their salary as it increases over time?
So what that is, is we have a, a ratio or a scale of one to five. Uh, and an employee gets evaluated on that rate being one, doing a piss poor job, sorry for the language, and five doing, uh, exceeding expectation and outstanding.
Okay.
If they get a three, that means they meet the job requirements. If they get a three, they don't get a raise. If they get a, above a three to a five, they're able to get anywhere from, um, I think it's two point seven five up to about a four percent raise.
And then, and then, and then the merit pay is, um, multiplied against the new raise or if they-
Against their base salary.
Against their base salary, correct.
And those that are from one to three that didn't get a raise are not showing, that, they don't, do they get a merit?
They don't get anything.
The two point seven five is an average, right?
Correct.
So it's an average in the budget, on the budget number, to go towards merit, which could be as high as four percent of an increase per-
Correct.
High-flying employees and-
Well, I'm glad you explained that to me because I wasn't sure exactly how that, that played out.
That's how that works.
Yes, sir.
On the competing cities that are in there and they have the cost of living, where does our average, when you lump it all together, are we sitting pretty good to where we don't start losing employees to other cities and, or the private sector?
So we, and I will answer that, just in the last three months, we've lost an IT employee making seventy-five thousand a year as a network admin to, uh, Acxiom as a, an analyst, entry-level analyst, making a hundred and twenty-seven thousand a year, making more than our, their, our IT director. We have lost, uh, public works employees making thirty-five thousand a year to go drive, uh, commercial vehicles with CDL licenses, making close to ninety thousand a year. I don't fault the employees for doing that by all means. It's, uh, it, I encourage anybody to find the ways in which they can provide for themselves and their family. Uh, but one of the beauties of Friendswood is the, the culture we have here. We have long tenureship amongst our employees because we treat them well, and, uh, it's a mutual respect. If we don't provide merit, we're going to start seeing a degradation of the quality of employees.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, no, that's why I was asking, Steve and I battled, have battled this. We saw a story, I think on the news that what, somebody left a teacher to go to be a Walmart manager.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you're seeing, private sector is getting really wild. I was just making sure. And I know we have good benefits that, against a lot of other places that do count quite a bit when people start looking at that jump.
Katina, I, I have just, uh, in digging through the numbers, um, just a question, how do you guys calculate FTEs?
Um, our full-time equivalents are related to two thousand and eighty hours, um, per employee. That would be one, uh, full-time equivalent. Um, our part-time, uh, we have several departments that have part-time employees. Um, our parks and recreation have, um, pool, like during the summer, the seasonal employees. In our municipal court, we've got our, um, deputy city attorneys, and that's a pool. So we base that on the number of hours, like we look at that, that pool. And so, for instance, with our, um, our deputy, uh, city attorneys, we have three employees that are in that pool of dollars. And, um, they are averaging about, it's, it's budgeted at point three six seven, um, FTEs, which equates to about a hundred and twenty, about a hundred and twenty-five hours on average for the year for each of those employees. So, um, we look at that, um, at that dollar amount.
Each one works six hundred some odd hours a year?
No, they're, well, they're budgeted to do about a hundred and fifty, between a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty hours for the year. And we divide that pool based on the salary, based on their hours.
So my question had to do with, I saw that you're, um, you're adding an admin person to the legal department.
Yes.
But the FTEs were at three point one. So you have one attorney, one admin, and I wondered where you got the extra one point one.
So, uh, man, jumping. So the, we didn't add an FTE to legal, we moved an FTE from the city secretary's office that was previously in my office, uh, to city secretary, then moved it over to legal to provide them some-
But then I saw, I thought I saw that the city secretary's got an increase coming.
She does not. So they're going to stay at the, the four FTEs.
That's fine. I'm glad that we did it that way, but, um, but I'm just curious because that looks like two point something FTEs and not three point one.
So the, the other, the other delta between the three point one and the two point O are the prosecutors that operate in municipal courts. So we have a pool of three prosecutors. So every time, every Wednesday, when we have a municipal court, do we have three attorneys that come work for the city part-time? They have their own private law profession outside the city of Friendswood. And they're the ones that-
Does that show up in, does that show up in the number that Rocky's talking about?
Yes, it does.
Because I did see that too. It was three versus, I knew we were sliding one over to transfer to legal.
Correct.
That made sense that that would be two, but there was three.
So that-
And I was wondering about that.
And I'm just curious is that those, so that would assume that those three people work slightly over twenty, eighty hours? And that seems a little high.
But it varies. So some of them may not work at all this next year. Uh, some of, two of them may work it, it, based upon their availability and the number of dockets that we have in the municipal court. So it's a pool of funds that are set aside for those part-time employees. And if, if we have a, a month where there's no court, you know, municipal court, they don't work at all. But we have to have funds set aside in order to pay them if they end up working.
Yeah, so if you, it, they don't use it, then it just goes into fund balance.
It goes into fund balance if they don't use it.
And, and, and then one more question, since the city attorney works directly for the council, do we have to approve in addition to staff to that department or not?
So if we added an FTE in the budget overall, then yes. So if we added an FTE in the budget overall, then yes, you would have to approve it. But uh, the city attorney works for city, for city council, but by charter, all other employees work for the city manager's office. So if I'm just shifting one FTE from one department to another, it's done at my discretion, provided funding's there.
Um, Mo, man, did we reclassify the city attorney because we zeroed out the city attorney on one uh general ledger columnary? And then she was created somewhere else.
So she was previously.
Created a whole different department.
Correct. She was previously under the mayor and council's uh budget department from a budgetary standpoint.
So I saw we tried to blow up.
We X'd that out and moved it over simply because.
We reclassified a lot of things in the budget this year.
Correct. And just as a matter of clarification, back when I was named assistant city manager in 2012, uh, I was still the department director for community development. And my salaries came, it came out of uh city manager's office, city, community development department, public works.
Um, which makes it extremely difficult for someone like me to sit there and goes, where's, where is this money going?
And so for clarity, we stopped doing that and we put employees entirely within a department. Or if it made sense to have a city attorney be their own department as opposed to having it mixed in with mayor and council, that's where we X'd it out and moved it over.
So did we do the city secretary a similar way and put her under a municipal clerk?
Um, no.
With that, we combined, we, they had three, I believe city secretary had two or three divisions and we combined those into one division. So we collapsed those to one division as municipal clerk.
It's just to make it simpler, I had three supply budgets, I had uh three uh coffee budgets, I had three of everything.
And so we.
My budget is so small, I asked that it be condensed into one.
Okay, well, that meant, that, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on, but that makes sense to me because I was trying to follow where we were going with the different departments. Yeah, thank you.
And um to Mr. Rocky's point, in the proposed budget, we've got 416 hours total for that um deputy city attorney pool. So it's.
Such a tough goal. I mean. Of the, of the proposed 1.557 million dollars in decision packages, 388,000 of those dollars are for landscaping.
And as I mentioned last month, if you want us to scale back, I have no problem scaling back. There are things that are considered essential functions for the organization uh as a city.
I just can't believe landscaping's gone up. I, I, I mean, no, I get, I understand.
Yeah.
But of the proposed one and a half million, 388,000 is for landscaping.
And that was after a second bid. The first bids came in at 500,000, raising to 3 million.
Yeah, I think I'd go get more bids.
We, we've done.
I'm sure Robert would do it for half that.
No, and we will gladly do that. I will say that's uh somewhat um.
I mean, I, again, I, I just, it shocks me that, that of all the decision pack, uh, cause I don't disagree with any of the decision packages. That 388 out of a 1.5 million increase is for landscaping.
Also, we will visit with the city attorney since we awarded that contract last month.
Which is above what we had been paying in the past.
Correct.
That's insane to me. I'd go get more, I'd go get more bids.
If that's the collective will of council, we can, uh, I'll work with the city attorney to cancel that contract that was awarded last month and uh rebid it. But I will say that was a second.
We did, we all did.
No.
Two months worth of discussion.
That's incredible.
Keep in mind that as, as, as projects are getting done, the city is getting more and more areas they gotta mow and take care of too.
Correct.
So as we do these projects, that, that piece is increasing as well.
Well, I was blown away about $5 million, the cost to put in a double turn lane.
Oh, I know.
Okay, so the prices are just, yeah, they're mind-boggling.
I know. I know.
I, I would encourage, obviously, that the impact of debt service, the impact of these projects are daunting. If, if there's a concern in the coming years, I don't know when this, this trend will take a turn uh in the other direction. But we can delay future debt issuances, we can delay other projects so that we don't continue to, we don't continue to purchase it at a premium rate.
Well, I think that would be prudent on our part, right?
And it's betting on the come. I don't know when that turns. So if we hold off doing a project for 10 years, um, is it, is it better for us? I don't know, but I'm telling you that is one option that we have.
But correct me if I'm wrong, aren't most of the dollars that are left for flood and we're looking for matching dollars, so?
Correct. No.
I kind of hate to say no to any partnerships that we might be able to develop going forward for flooding issues.
And, and when we, when we uh went to the public for that flooding, we said, hey, you know, it's gonna take 10 years. And if you're gonna delay it for these reasons, all we're doing is forestalling what the, what the citizens told us to do, which was, which was protect them from flooding.
I get it 100%.
Go ahead, Katrina.
Okay. The next couple of slides are um, were alluded to with our um unfunded decision packages. These are items that the departments um identified, um, the departments identified um this slide and the next two. Um, include um our items that were submitted by the departments as, um, as needs. But um due to funding availability, were not included in the proposed budget. And on the slide is also the tax rate equivalent for each of those items.
You know, it gives me heartburn when I see a police officer on an unfunded uh chart of unfunded packages. Uh, there, I think there are two, two drivers to Friendswood. And that is uh our safety, how safe it is here, and our schools. And so um, I think that really, for lots of reasons, that gives me heartburn when I see a patrol officer on that. Decision package that was unfunded, that gives me heartburn.
Okay, so just to be clear, chief, uh, this is towards you. So in the past, we had uh, and, and I'm not sure of the certain numbers today. But a lot of times there's funding for police officers in the budget, but not actual bodies.
Yeah.
To hold the position.
Question, so you ought to ask them.
And that's no longer the, that's, that's no longer the case.
Yeah, that, I just wanted to have.
We had, we had three spots in their field.
Their field, but you know, we're constantly, you know, under pressure with retirements. Um, we had uh, you know, one leave uh to go back to another agency that he came from, and that was no loss. But we've been staffed at 1.6 2018. Because of uh, uh Santa Fe.
Yep.
Uh, if you remember, uh, we fixed pay. So we went down to 64 to fix pay. Uh, but uh ultimately, uh, you know, the agreed upon staffing level was 1.57. Because we uh decommissioned the crime prevention officer's position this last year and brought in a PIO and a crime analyst.
Tell everybody what you mean by 1.57, 1.6.
So 1.57 is uh the number of officers per thousand of residents.
Yeah.
So right now, our staffing level is at 1.54, will be below that. So we go into 2023, fiscal year 2023 will be two below uh the staffing level. And by the time we come into uh 2024, which will be next year's budget, we'll be looking at putting three on.
Yeah.
Yeah, but going back to your question, we don't have vacancies. So historically, we've been able to accomplish some of our staffing needs just due to attrition and stuff.
Yeah, just to be clear, so every, every dollar that was put in the budget for police officers, policemen.
Correct.
Is, is filled.
Correct.
There's no, there's no outstanding placeholder.
No, there's no outstanding placeholder, which is flat, but we're, we're down one, we'll be down two by the end of 2023.
Gotcha.
And when you factor in what we'll need to do the following year, we'll need a total of three.
But chief, are those unfunded?
Correct. No, no, so.
One's unfunded right now. So I don't even have the authorization. So if we can't fund it, at least give me the authorization to stay at 1.57. And we'll see where we're at either mid-year or the third quarter about whether or not we can go ahead and fill that position. If you don't authorize 66, then I can't fill it, even if I had the money.
Right.
And I, I agree with what Trish said. I mean, you look at that, but what, 50%? You said it was almost public safety?
Between fire and PD, we're looking nearly 50% of our driven off one budget is that.
Yeah, and every, everything that comes to our city, if to get good schools, it starts with the public safety and getting people here and why they want to come here and. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I hate to see any police officers on that unfunded also. I'd like to try to figure out how to stay ahead of that. So that way we don't get to a year we gotta get five or 10.
I'm not, I'm not even asking for any money. I'm just asking for the authority to hire to 66. And if something happens, you know, with vacancies or, you know, with where we get through uh, you know, the end of the year. Then we can go ahead and hire late year for that 66 position. Not gonna cost you any money at all. What a great deal.
And.
But I will say that our security posture has changed for all the major events. So we hired private security to augment the police department uh for the 4th of July. And uh, we're gonna have to uh hire private security for uh the Christmas parade and for the Santa in the park event. Because we're gonna have to be postured for uh the things that are occurring around us that are out of the ordinary. And specifically active shooters. So we're gonna have to be ready for that, whether we want to be or we don't. And the Texas Music Fest is gonna look a lot different than the last time, if we choose to go ahead and do that. That will be a totally different event as far as where the PD is and uh what we're gonna be poised to do in a, in a, in an event like that.
How does, how does that budget affect your budget when you gotta keep hiring out on this?
On what's, what's that?
Like with the different events, like you said, the parade.
So for a major event, I mean, you know, you brought up destination cities. I think one of the speakers brought up destination cities. We're not staffed to be a destination city. And if we were gonna be staffed to even think about being a devastate, you know, a devastating city, a destination city. We probably need about two and a half million more in the PD budget. And I'm not asking for that.
Like what's a Galveston?
Well, Galveston, take a look at their staffing. I mean, their population is probably uh 55, 56,000. And uh their staffing is probably 160 uh officers. And they're getting a 10.1% pay raise too, by the way, this year.
And just to make it clear, going back to the earlier point, that additional officer request is not included in the flat tax rate. So in order to fund in addition to that, we'd have to increase the budget somehow.
Let me ask you this, Mo. We, we were talking about the SRO officers at the high school and them taking a larger role of the cost of um, of supporting those SRO officers. That, those dollars that we're currently spending um city dollars on to protect the school is how much?
So the total contract between what the school district's paying and what the city is paying is right under 600,000 a year.
$600,000 a year. And the unfunded police officer that I'm looking at right here is about 132,700. I think that if we got the school to take up their portion of, of the cost, then we could save $600,000 and ha, and add two or three police officers.
Hold on, the, and the 600,000, the school district's paying nearly 400,000 of it. We're paying the remaining 200,000.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Uh, so we can fund.
Our share of that cost is not 600.
Historically, our share was the reversal. We, we paid three quarters of it and the school district paid a quarter of it. Since I became city manager, we've been working each year to, to close that gap. And now we're only paying a quarter.
Disappear and just let the, if, if the school wants it.
Yeah, it's all Ms., it's all Ms. Hanks' fault.
Yeah, we're going after that.
But seeing as how that got brought up, can I answer it?
We, we.
We can even skip executive session.
Hey, we can get, we can get you the dollars.
So I would just say.
From the school district.
That one, that one officer, you know, was based on an agreement 20 years ago. So we started the school resource officer program. It was 100% grant funded. And then uh, you know, when you get a grant, you know, the problem is that you have to agree to continue the program afterwards. So the way that it was agreed on, and Trish Hanks will know this, is that the city funded one and the school district funded the other. And that's really where we went from almost 2001, 2002 to um probably 2018, when we went to four. Because of Santa Fe.
Santa Fe, right.
So what we gain by having an officer in the uh, in the schools is good visibility about what's going on.
I agree.
I mean, the mayor, when we had the pre-council meeting, asked about leverage. $200,000 gives us leverage and it gets us into those schools. We've preempted three incidents in the last five years. Two of them because we had officers on campus. One was one that we caught later on. So I don't think anybody in Uvalde is talking about the tax rate today.
No.
Chief, I'm gonna have to let every department head in the room up there to talk to.
Hey, she brought it up. I mean, I answered the question.
I, I know. You can go, you can sit back down. We appreciate you. All right.
Can I ask a question about?
Santa in the park, not Sander. Not that Boston Santa.
Steve Rock.
I have a question of what we're uh, what we're to accomplish on this agenda item for the rest of the day here. Uh, I'm, I'm a little lost as to what, we, we don't have any votes here other than just determining when the public hearing's gonna be, right?
So for this agenda item, it's just informational. The subsequent agenda items, you will vote uh on a, what's considered a.
A proposed tax.
Proposed uh tax rate, but the official vote will take place in September.
We're just trying to get through uh Katrina's slides.
Yes.
I, I would, I would encourage us to, to uh, between the 388,000 dollar increase in landscaping and what the school's doing. Figure out a way to come up with 133,000 dollars and fund that police department position.
I will, I will do my best.
Without changing the tax rate where it's proposed.
Understood. And I, I appreciate that direction. I assume that's the collective will.
I feel like I need to remind everybody that if we have a problem with the proposed tax rate that they're recommending. This is when we hash it out in the budget discussion. Okay?
I agree, Trish.
Thank you.
And I, I wanna.
School district's budget.
You know, I would be concerned if we pulled back from um, from funding officers in the schools. Because you'd, you'd, you'd tell the school district, you're better off running your own police department rather than us. And we want to be involved.
I don't think we're saying that.
Yeah.
No, 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 we're not saying that at all.
I know, but if you, if you tell them, you gotta fund more, we fund less, at some point, they're gonna look at the balance of that equation and say, well, we can run it ourselves, you know, more effectively. Yeah. Well, I understand. That's what I'm pointing out here.
Did we, was that last month or this month? I mean, y'all have already worked it out, the school and the city.
So we've, for the most part, worked it out. And there's an agenda item later this evening to discuss it. Now, I've already had conversations with Thad that we're gonna try to close that gap. And we have made quite a bit of progress because as I told you before, historically, we paid 75% of that cost and the district paid a quarter. And over the last several years, we have stair-stepped it back to, we're only, we're only paying a third of that cost now.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Moving on from the unfunded decision packages, um, the next slide is, um, shows our change in fund balance.
On this slide, you saw a similar slide at the last council meeting. This is our fund balance growth over the last, um, I would say 11 years, 11 fiscal years. Uh, the blue lines represent the revenue received, the gr, uh, the, not green, the, the red bar represents the expenditures made. The green line represents our 90-day reserve. And as you'll know, each year as our, our budget increases based upon changes. Our 90-day reserve changes to reflect 90 days of our operating budget. And the blue line represents our fund uh balance above the 90-day reserve for capital projects, for deferred maintenance items that we've uh encountered over the years. In 2020, when we did the known revenue rate, the comment was made that our fund balance grew. Well, the only reason our fund balance grew was because we had a $2 million infusion of COVID funds from the feds with no strings attached. Without that infusion of cash, we'd be negative $1 million in fund balance that year. Currently, we are negative 229,000. So we're not negative in our budget account. We're negative and we don't have a 90-day reserve that we're required to have by our, our financial policy. And also what we're required to have to have a good bond rating for future debt issuances. I, I asked staff to include a little picture of an abacus on the left. A lot of times when you're looking at our, at our overall budget, there's comments made, well, you have a lot of money left in this account, why don't you use this to balance the budget? The unfortunate reality is we can't move one beat from one line to the other. Cause a lot of the, these items are fun, are fun set aside by. are, are funds set aside by either federal mandates, state law, or you can't intermix water sewer funds with general, uh, fund revenue. I know it sounds complicated. This is far more complex than our standard household income. Whereas if we have a cost that comes in a little higher than we anticipated, we just borrow from one of our other accounts. We don't have that ability in operating our budget, unfortunately.
Moving into our water and sewer fund, um, nothing has changed on our water sewer, uh, fund projections for the operating of our water and sewer fund from what we provided or shared with you preliminarily. Um, the water and sewer fund revenue is, um, in the proposed budget is 18.2 million. About 97% of that is coming from our utility service fees. So those are user fees for water and sewer. Um, the remaining 3% is, um, administrative fees for, um, late or non-payments as well as interest earnings and, uh, some water meter, uh, charges. Another look at our, um, water and sewer fund revenues, um, showing the increases or decreases from the current year's budget. The, um, proposed expenses in the water and sewer fund totaled about 16.4 million. The majority of this, you can see in the, the chart, the breakdown by department or by function of the water and sewer, um, operating fund. Would like to mention that, um, those revenue bond related projects are recorded in a separate fund. They're not recorded in the water sewer operating fund. They're in a separate construction fund. Um, our forces at work that were included in the proposed budget for water and sewer fund totaled about, um, 600, just under 690,000. The decision packages funded in the budget for the water sewer fund totaled about 530,000. And the next slide is our path to budget and tax rate adoption on September 12th. The proposed budget's been delivered. Um, tonight's our first work session. Staff is available for more if council deems it necessary, um, going forward before adoption. We, um, would need to have a public hearing on the proposed budget and we are, um, recommending that that be held as a special meeting on August 29th. And that's where we would take comments from the public on our proposed budget. Um, if council, uh, proposes the tax rate used in the budget development, we would need to have publication, um, in the newspaper and on our website as well as hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. And that would take place on September 12th and then we would adopt our, um, budget and then our tax rate to support that, um, that budget on September 12th. So as always, we thank you for your input and your guidance as we move through the budget, um, process. So we're here for questions or, um, anything that we can do to offer additional information.
Yeah, great job, Katina, as usual.
Thank you all.
Okay, item B, consider setting the public hearing regarding the City of Friendswood fiscal year 2022, 2023 municipal budget for August 29th, 2022 at 5:30 PM in Council Chamber, City Hall, Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Branson, second by Brent. Setting the budget public hearing for August 29th at 5:30 PM in Council Chamber. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, item C, receive the 2022 appraisal rolls certified by the Galveston Central Appraisal District and the Harris County Appraisal District, the anticipated collection rate and the excess debt collections certified by the city's tax collector and the no new revenue and voter approved tax rates.
Now, we don't have the Harris County Appraisal District certification.
We have what they refer to as preliminary certified. Uh, simply put, because of their population, they're not by law required to give us their certified, certified values until later this month.
So what are we approving here?
You're not doing anything, you're just accepting the, the, the values that have been provided by the appraisal district.
We're just accepting.
So Katina is, uh, presenting us with the appraisal.
Yes.
It's in your backup, it's in your backup material.
I, I see it.
Yeah, there is no action required. Historically, this has not been on our city council agenda, but, uh, we felt it would be a good option to start including it on council agendas for easier access for the public if they wanted to see it. You would receive this each year as part of the budget process, just never at a council meeting.
And you know, what's really interesting is that even when they certify their values, there are protests still going on. So even after the date of the certified values, that number is going to change and Katina and her staff will have to deal with that.
Yes, ma'am. There are actually, I believe we're up to supplemental roll number six on 2021 tax year. So it, it's continuously changing until, um, we move into the next year.
Okay, the appraisal rolls.
But incredibly, the, the amount that we collect is in the 99 percentile.
Yes, yes, sir.
We get that. We thank our residents for that because that, it's because of their good stewardship that we're able to, to fund the operations.
And with those supplemental, uh, rolls and those properties that are under protest, there is a certain percentage that is included in our, in our estimated or in our net, our no new revenue rate calculation. It's about 80% that we, that they believe will become certified and will be added to the tax roll. There is always, of course, those properties under protest that still have exemptions that residents can claim. So there's that offset as well.
Thank you.
Okay, the, so the appraisal rolls have been received. Item D, consider approving the proposed ad valorem tax rate for 2022 fiscal year, October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023. Hang on a second.
Wait, are we doing C or D?
We're doing D. C, C we just. We accept the appraisal.
Okay.
No vote.
No vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the City of Friendswood proposed tax rate of 48.7314 cents per $100 valuation? With this rate being effectively a 6.54% or 2.99 cent increase in the tax rate above the no new revenue rate of 45.7421 cents and also being the same as the city's current tax rate? I have a motion, Steve Rocky, Sally, I'm sorry, Trish Hanks. Any further questions? This is a feel-good vote that we're taking to.
So you may recall a couple of years ago, uh, there was a question as to whether or not it was five votes or, uh, four votes are required to raise the tax rate. This is simply a majority vote to, to set. If, if the majority of you approve a tax rate of 48 cents, we will have a public hearing on September 12th to vote on the tax rate officially. If, if there's not majority support for anything above the no new revenue rate, then between now and September, I will bring back a revised budget to y'all, uh, that meets the revenue requirement set.
I got, I got a question and it may be a bad question or a dumb question.
No, sir.
You mentioned about the, the police earlier and getting that in the right spot on the budget to not have to change the, the tax rate. Is any of this vote gonna affect how that's handled?
If you do not adopt the flat tax rate, it's gonna extremely hamstring our ability to even fund our current service levels, let alone getting that additional FTE funded somehow.
So what we basically asked Mo to do is in, in the next month, work these numbers. Sticking with this tax rate to work with, you know, that's, that's the upper limit you got to work with. If you can massage numbers to make it all work, fit into the bag, then great, you know, so we'll, I'm sure he'll do some hand springs.
If you do the no new revenue rate, you've cut the bag in half and it's gonna be very difficult to keep everything in place.
Okay, so all in motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item E is consider setting the public hearing regarding the ad valorem tax rate for 2022 on September 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in Council Chamber, City Hall, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, 77546. Do I have a motion to set a public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for 2022 to be held on September 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers of City Hall?
Don't move.
Second.
Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Rocky, got it? Any further questions on this? All in favor? September 12th.
You hear V square.
Also, please note that following the September 12th, 2022 public hearing, the vote adopting the tax rate for tax year 2022 will also take place. Item nine. Tax year 2023, it should say, yes. Adopting the tax rate for tax year 2023.
Yes.
Good catch because every time you catch a mistake, Letty owes me lunch. Now we're in item nine, city managers report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have two short items and if you forgive me, I'm gonna give an update on our automated meters as well, uh, at the end of it. So the first item, update on the Stevenson Park parking lot project. We discussed this at the last city council meeting. Late September, we will hold one of three town hall meetings that will take place at the library. And Letty, can you move to the next slide? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir.
Uh, we will hold, uh, three, one of three public meetings that will take place at the library at the end of September, one in October and one in November. The first meeting in September, the, the consultant, half and associates, or half associates will be in there with, um, aerial photographs on easels throughout the room. They'll give a short presentation and they'll ask folks that are in attendance to go around the room placing dots on maps as to what they would like to see, if anything, on these properties. Approximately one month later in October, they'll get the opportunity to do that same exercise again. And they'll also give a brief update on what those that came in September, their thoughts and comments were. And they'll hold one more meeting at the end of November, uh, to just get anybody that they may have missed and give an update as to what, uh, the input from the other citizens were. In addition to that, we're gonna have an online survey that will be kicked off in September as well that allow folks to give input that may or may not be able to attend, attend the town hall meeting. Though the, the, the consultant provided some conceptual plans of what can potentially be out there, nothing has been determined at this point. So if the, there's an overwhelming support by the public that attends these meetings that we'd like to leave everything as is, I am perfectly good with that, especially in light of the budget discussion we just had. But I just wanted to let the public know this is their opportunity to come in and engage similar to what was done at the library town hall meeting that we heard some reports on this evening. Uh, the second item, uh, we are moving the September city council meeting to September 12th due to Labor Day. Um, and I think that's a fine picture that's on the screen. It shows the seven of y'all engaged and it shows me holding my forehead, trying to figure out what y'all are telling me to do. John Scott probably was talking in that picture. Uh, the last item that, uh, I didn't put on the agenda, but just a brief update on the automated meter program. We're about 46% complete in the conversion of the standard meters to ones that are automated. Uh, though the user interface is not open to the public right now, our technicians are reading the meters remotely and also feel, feel verifying them to make sure that they are accurate. Uh, we have run into some issues or I've noticed some chatter on social media that folks are complaining that the meter change out has caused leaks on their property. If you have a concern, by all means, I encourage you to contact our public works department. We will investigate it. We have insurance in place. If we did cause damage, whether it's our insurance or the contractor's insurance, we will make it right. If it could be tied to activities that we did. If you have a leak or had a pre-existing leak that you weren't aware of, obviously, we can't fix that.
No, it wouldn't have anything to do with water pressure, would it? I had somebody call me that said that when they got their new meter in, they've had low water pressure ever since.
No.
They referred them on, but.
By all means, send those folks to us. We can troubleshoot it on a case-by-case basis. We've had impacts to our water pressure due to the water line breaks that we've had throughout the community and it may have just coincided with, uh, with the break, um, at that time.
I just, I want to say what you said about contacting public works. I know several people that have and they've come out right away and said if it was somebody's fault, I mean, I've seen some of them been fixed and some of them they haven't, but they're responding quick. So just give them a hand for doing that and we're not just ignoring the problem like you're seeing online.
Correct. And, and, and as I've mentioned to y'all before, I applaud our guys. If there's ever a doubt as to whether or not it's our responsibility or the homeowners, 90% of the time we err on the side of we'll take care of it just so that there is no question. Um, and you've seen that with the recognitions we've done with our five-star spirit award.
Thank you. Item 10, recess the city council meeting, call to order the Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust regular meeting. We'll now recess the August 1st city council meeting and call to order the Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust regular meeting to consider item 2A. Item 2A, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate agreements for one, employee medical, dental and pharmacy insurance. Two, employee life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance. Three, employee vision insurance. Four, employee long-term disability insurance and five ancillary products for employees. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilmembers Hanks and Branson have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Motion passes. With no further business, we now adjourn the Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust regular meeting. I now reconvene the city council regular meeting and move on to item 12A. Consider authorizing the monthly transfer of funds to the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust contingent upon sufficient appropriations in the fiscal year 2022, 2023 City of Friendswood bu, budget.
Second.
John Scott and Brent, I heard. All in favor? Motion passes. Consider authorizing a memorandum of renewal of the emergency medical services agreement with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department for the first one-year extension term. John Scott and Brent again, all in favor? Consider the appointment of Mr. Kyle Winnie to the Community and Economic Development Committee for a three-year term beginning immediately and ending on June 30th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Is Mr. Winnie here?
Mr. Winnie was here, uh, briefly, uh, but he had to duck out to go get his kids. He just stayed for the budget presentation.
God bless him.
Consider authorizing the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation to expend funds for its FM 518 illumination project.
Motion to approve. Second.
I heard Sally and Trish. Okay, uh, any further questions? Even Ray stands at the ready. Okay, all in favor? Okay, consider awarding the fiscal year 2021, 2022 striping maintenance contract. That seems like a couple of years ago. Is that what we're approving that?
Correct. We were finally able to get a package together and a willing contractor to do this, this work.
Stripping maintenance contract to PaveCon Limited. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Steve Rocky, Brent, all in favor? Motion passes. Proposed resolutions and ordinances, consider a resolution authorizing a master lease purchase agreement with Truist Bank and approving financial terms. Need a motion on this. John Scott?
Second.
Trish? Want to give us a quick update?
Sure. Briefly, there are items for, uh, purchase in our current proposed budget that are capital in nature. Rather than taking the full debt impact, our, uh, tax impact in this next fiscal year, we're splitting this cost over a five-year period by doing a lease purchase agreement.
Good plan. All in favor? Consider a resi, uh, resolution designating a portion of Skyview Terrace as Joyceena Day Baker Memorial Lane.
I'll make the motion.
To approve.
Sally and Brent have a motion by Sally Branson, a second by Brent Aaron Work, approving a resolution declaring a portion of Skyview Terrace as Joyceena Day Baker Memorial Lane. Any questions or comments? Got a question?
Yeah, are we naming the street or are we putting a memorial up?
It's just a section of the street, a sign.
It's just a sign. The street is not being renamed.
Okay, that's what I thought. That just kinda, okay, bye.
Hey, all in favor? Motion passes. Consider the fir, first and final reading of an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 by approving budget amendment 11 and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Second.
John Scott and Trish, any questions? All in favor? Consider the first reading of an ordinance amending the schedule of fees for emergency medical services. In appendix D, schedule of fees, rates, charges, deposits, bonds and insurance amounts of the Friendswood City Code to update fees for ground emergency medical services provided by the City of Friendswood through the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Consider the first reading of an ordinance approving the street name change of Hatcher Lane to Parkside Drive to include the entirety of the existing right-of-way.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Can I, can we have a discussion? Just, I just have, I'm for this. I just voted for it. But what is our process with regard to, for example, Mr. Hatcher was actually an alderman. He was on city council in the 60s. Was the family contact that the name, and I realize the street doesn't really go anywhere. I know that.
really go anywhere, I know that, but you know, when we're, it wasn't like it was pine or oak, this was a person, this was a family. So I'm not disagreeing with what we voted on this evening, I voted for it, but I would like to understand that going forward, will there be a process to reach out to family members and say, hey, just want you to know, we're changing the name of your street?
So if there were, there was an item in which the city council took action to rename something, for instance, in this, the Joyce Baker item earlier, then yes, there would be a process that, one, that we couldn't undo that, but Hatcher Lane was simply named when it was platted, so it wasn't a council action in honor of somebody else. We are bringing back to you guys the facility naming policy, if that's something that you want us to elaborate on to include, we can definitely include it, but I definitely, I understand the concern. For instance, Adam is the one that made this request. When he plots a subdivision, he, he proposes names for that subdivision in the future. If the folks on that street decide they don't, no longer want the, the name of one of the streets he proposed when he platted, they can come to this body and get it changed as well.
And I'm sure you had a good reason why you wanted to change it.
She called us, we did talk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she did, she called today. And I think she was a little sad.
Yeah.
But I think she understood that the park, you know, we're trying to associate that the park, we're putting eighty-four parking spots that'll help during parades and stuff like that, so she was very kind.
She was very kind. We actually spoke about some historical stuff today, and she brought up Hatcher Lane, and so I was like, well.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Adam, I appreciate it. And you know, like a lot of things, you wanna do something with the property, buy the property, and you have rights as the owner to do things, like change the name of the street that runs through your property, so.
Make a motion to approve the consent. Second.
All in favor? Thank you, John. We'll now recess into and convene an executive session pursuant to Section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel associated with the School Resource Officer Agreement with Friendswood I now reconvene our open meeting of the Friendswood City Council and announce that in accordance with Section 551.102 of the Texas Government Code, no action was taken in executive session. We now move on to item sixteen A.
Most adjourned.
No, that's not it. Consider authorizing a school resource officer agreement.
Hold your horses down there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
She has to finish reading.
That's close enough.
Second.
I'll second.